Okay, I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is the November 16th, 2021 Planning Board Meeting. My name is Kathy Barnard. I'm the chairman of the Planning Board. And let me introduce the other members. Down at my extreme left is Susan Replier, sitting next to Susan Von Dugan, and Peter Goodwin, Mike Carter, who's the vice chairman of the Planning Board. To my right, John Thurston. Next to John is Brad Harriman, who's the representative from the Board of Selectmen, Julie Jacobs, who is an alternate. Okay, the first item on the agenda is a public hearing, and there are no applications for a public hearing. So we'll go down to the next item, which is discussion items. The first issue on the agenda is the discussion of architectural design standards. Vaughn, do you want to go ahead and say something about that?
Sure. We have been having very few so far reviews of architectural issues that have come toward us, but it seems that we need to have some kind of a process in place, especially because we don't want to ambush anybody. You know, it's unfortunate to have somebody come to a meeting with drawings at a complete moment in the design. Let's say they've already selected windows, materials, they're practically done looking for approval, and then have a list of things that we may or may not like, or have people bring them up. And this really came to mind during the charrette. I don't know if anybody met, the town of Durham, town planner, his name is Michael Berent. He approached me when I was handing out the design standards for those who were participating. And he wanted to know how we were doing with them. I said, we were, you know, it was brand new. We had just adopted them. And so far, we haven't really had much of a process of review. And he regaled me for a while, actually, on what they do in Durham and what we should do, or his opinion of how things should work. And that came to mind. And then I went to the Durham website to see if they have something online that I could compare to. I couldn't find anything specific as to the process. And so I called him today, and we had a discussion about this. And he said that there is really nothing written, but generally what they do is they have, and in his case, it's him, an architect or an architectural professional review with the architect or the designer for a project at a very early stage, the documents, and then, you know, work to make them better before they come in for a formal hearing to the board, and then presumably would come in with a recommendation. Oh, we worked on this, they were amenable to these changes.
So the architectural review board would make recommendations?
Well, actually, either an architect that you would hire, or somebody who has got architectural expertise. So, you know, he said that I should do it. I said, I don't know that that's, you know, a good idea. That's why we're discussing this. Other towns, I've looked at Hanover, sometimes they'll hire architects. They have volunteers. In his case, he happens to be, I think he has some kind of an architectural degree. He certainly goes on the stump about architecture. So I just thought we should, I can go through what he said if you're interested. He said, you know, there should probably be one person leading. It could be staff. They should be very familiar with architectural design issues. You know, if it's a huge project, in Durham, they sometimes hire a consultant to work with the architect to make suggestions and then hopefully, you know, not make anything too significant in the way of changes, but make sure that they're meeting the guidelines before they come into the board. He likened it to the storm water regulation in that it's sort of a technical review. And in our case, I think we do use engineers to review those criteria. So he's suggesting it's applicable, the same idea is applicable. So it's a process. It would be a process that whenever they go into the planner, the planner would say, look, you know, we have somebody who's offered to meet with you, to guide you through the regulations, and to recommend the project to the planning board or not. So that's their method.
Where I was before, we worked with an architectural review committee, and it was made up of three architects, sort of the same thing, work with the people, and then eventually go to the planning board, usually adopt whatever architectural review committee had suggested. Anybody else want to chime in here?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I'm most wondering if we're contemplating making the current process more complicated than it need be. This is how I see it. Applicants coming here are responsible for adhering to the zoning ordinances. Presumably, the presenter of the application is a professional, knows enough to read the ordinances and to see what he's supposed to do and what he's not supposed to do. And where he has got questions, he knows to who to go to, and that's the planner. Same would hold with architectural design guidelines that we have in site plan review currently. They're fairly self-explanatory. They tell you what you can and can't do, in particular with the Kingswood Golf Course The prohibition on a particular portion of that project was clear, and it also provides, since they're in site plan review, provides a very robust mechanism for applying for a waiver from the planning board for particular reasons that have to be argued at the hearing time. I'm a little bit concerned about establishing an architectural review board, whether it's just you, Vaughn, or whether it's other members of the planning board, and you, Vaughn, or somebody else who knows something about architecture, or is an architect, because then we're putting an additional layer in for architectural review standards, where we only have one other sort of review board in addition to the planning board, and that's when we do stormwater regulations, and we have to have calculations made by the engineer, or at least verified by an engineer. Can we not simply expect applicants to adhere to architectural standards as published? And if they find that they either can't or would prefer not to, assume that they will file for a waiver and argue that waiver with the board at the time of presentation?
So Michael did sort of go down that route, and what he suggested is that we offer that service for free, and if they would like to take the opportunity to meet with somebody prior to coming to the board, then we could make somebody, either a committee or a person, available to guide them. What comes to mind is the architect that came here for Gala. And he seemed to be of the opinion that since there was no historical structure on the road or in the back bay, that didn't really apply. So, I mean, if something as simple as that argument could be alleviated, so that suddenly you're not saying, oh geez, those windows, they really don't work, you know, at a very late date, you know, when they're ready to roll.
Yeah, I understand. I thought that by putting the standards into site plan review, that gave us the flexibility to consider an objection or a request for an alleviation of a requirement at the time of the hearing. Who would be in this independent, if you'd like it, you can have it, review board that would...
We could either have a group or a person, you know, a volunteer, if anybody's willing, there are architects around. I would, I could do it. Certainly couldn't meet with the applicant, but I could meet with the applicant's architect, because I'm sitting on this.
Yeah, Peter, did you want to say something?
Isn't this a question of education? And I believe that, you know, if we're dealing with stormwater runoff, there is a mechanism to have questions answered by the planner or some other individuals. And so if that's a regulation which we end up having to adhere to, which is stormwater runoff and water quality and all these kinds of things, and here is another regulation which we are trying to have the applicant adhere to, and so I would believe that there'd be some mechanism for them to ask appropriate questions and get answers before they arrive here, and we then say, no, you can't do that. I just think there needs to be some mechanism to do that, and I don't know what it is, but there needs to be some mechanism.
Just a second. John? Okay, go ahead.
If Vaughn and others on this board are willing to serve as independent architectural review board prior to the application coming here, that's more power to you, and thank you very much for your projected service. In the ordinary course of an application to the planning board, the recourse is to the planner, who is expected to understand the ordinances that he's here to force or work towards getting enforced, and also to help the applicant get through the minefield of putting an application for the planning board for a project. And...
Okay.
That's as far as I can go. I mean...
Yeah, I would be a little uncomfortable with a planning board member playing that role. It seems kind of like...
Kind of a conflict.
Some sort of a conflict.
Well, I guess I would end up saying that the person who is dealing with the same kind of issues as to water quality and that kind of thing, the town planner can end up, you know, dealing with this kind of issue. Maybe he, I say facetiously, maybe he's not familiar with the architectural standards. I am sure he is, and so therefore, this is just part of the conversation. So maybe this is one extra sentence or something in an application permit which says, if you have questions about architectural standards, please ask them. I mean, it's all about education.
Right. And just to the one point about Kingswood, I don't believe we did ask for a waiver. And so that was on us. I mean, we really should have. People, when they present something, need to go through the criteria and say, it either is okay, or here's why we don't think we have to comply with it.
Yeah.
And then submit the waiver.
I agree. We were lax in applying our own ordinances by plan review. We have a lot of leeway, but we were lax in applying them. I think we have a pre-application process in which an applicant can come here and get an opinion from the planning board prior to making a formal presentation. That might be an opportunity for someone who has architectural concerns, which the planner might alert that person to, to come here and get a sense of the board's feeling on whether or not the architectural standards, one, apply, and two, does a guy need a waiver to get done what he wants to do? Maybe we could do it. In that case, we would have Vaughn's expert opinion as a planning board member.
And everyone would participate. Yes, right. Tavis, did you want to say something?
Well, one of the reasons I was happy that this is on the agenda is because this is the first year that the architectural design standards became mandatory. There were really only three applications. Without going into any project specifics, one of the comments that came up, I actually think it was Vaughn, said, well, we didn't really mean it for this part of town. One of the other applications was the planning board saying, well, maybe they should have requested a waiver, and we were just talking about it at Kingswood, but it's in the middle of nowhere, so this seems a bit farcical to go down this rabbit hole. But then, the last meeting, there was a rather prominent building in town having some work done, and the question came from the planning board, well, how does it comply with the design standards? Well, Peter was being very kind and gentle in suggesting that the planner doesn't necessarily know what the design guidelines are. I would also suggest that perhaps there are board members that need a refresher on what they say.
Yeah, I would agree with you. I think that the planning board as a body needs to remind itself that we have architectural review guidelines, as well as parking regulations, as well as setback regulations, wetlands regulations that we have to apply, and that we should simply stick them in the bag along with all the other tools that we have to apply to each application as it comes forward.
So to that point, the two prior staff reviews, I'm not trying to pat myself on the back, but going back to applications, I put the entire design review standard section in the staff review, attempt to be assistive to the board, saying, don't forget, these are the standards. And they didn't get a lot of attention. The next iteration of that staff review, I said, don't forget the design standards. And the comment was, well, what are they? How do they apply? So one of the issues I see, and this is my understanding of some town history, and I don't mean to step on anyone's toes, either in the room or watching abroad, there was a, I forget the name of it, there was a historic district of sorts on some areas of town that had its own commission, that commissioned reviewed projects. My understanding of the story is that commission became rather arduous, had not the best reaction to that committee, which was ultimately voted out at a subsequent town meeting. Where I would hate to see, if there were an architectural review board created, I agree that it doesn't need to be perhaps fully staffed by architects, because if you ask five architects to draw the same picture, you'll get five different buildings. Which one is right, I don't know. So part of the question I have for the planning board is, what is the intent, what is the goal of the planning board in having these design standards? Because I'll be quite frank, there are many applicants that come in and say, I just need to get the site approved and know what size building I can facilitate on the property. I haven't even thought about the architecture yet, but you are not letting me apply until I've designed the entire building, which was a reservation I had when they became a mandatory element. Not everyone thinks through the entire project. But by the same token, I would not encourage that applicant to request a waiver, simply to sidestep the design guidelines. By the same extension, I don't think it's appropriate to grant site plan approval with the condition that they come back when they have the architectural drawings done, because there could be site plan implications to the architecture and vice versa.
We can impose conditions on an approval that speak to architectural design guidelines. So we can handle it in that case. And I really think that architectural design standards are in our site plan review, we are the body empowered to apply them. And if we have the benefit of a professional architect on this board currently, who can look at a set of plans and see them with a professional eye that the rest of us lack, we should take advantage of that and use this board as the effective architectural review board.
Do applicants, when they're proposing new buildings or additions, do they get the architectural standards? Do we make them aware of it?
Part of the site plan review application is all of the applicable regulations. They have site plan.
Okay, well, then, yeah, maybe that's where we could start, is have them look at those standards and determine if they need a waiver or not.
I think, for me, the big question is, what extent does the board, how, how, how to say this, how hard is the board want to push the regulations? You know, okay, so we're looking for a front door that presents to the street, we're looking for appropriate fenestration. What's appropriate? Everyone lands on a different dime there, perhaps. But it's going to take a bunch of process for the planning board to get in sync with itself on where to go.
Yeah, right.
As it does with any application for zoning in which a waiver is allowable.
So as an interim step, I'm happy to put together a separate checklist, if you will, you know, going through the application, you know, do they have stormwater, do they have this, and then design standards. It may simply be printing out the design standards and circling those that I looked at and believe were addressed, come up with some symbology. It circled, or it circled with a line through. Yeah, they kind of paid attention to the roof, but not really, and that would give the board some guidance as to what to look at.
Okay, why don't we start doing that? And if someone runs into a situation where they say, well, you just can't, there's no way we can comply with this, then that person could come here on just an informal basis.
There is an optional pre-application for site plan, non-binding discussion, etc., which, you know, I think this is the first one I've actually ever received. We're not going to talk about it tonight, but since I've been here, the question would be, the optional planning board review happen prior to TRC, post TRC, really doesn't matter necessarily.
Right.
But we'll just start that additional process.
Okay, so do you think that would work? Vaughn, go ahead.
I think having them given something in a very preliminary phase is helpful, because I really dislike, you know, the idea of the late in the day, coming to the board hoping for approval, and suddenly we haven't even reviewed it. And I think absolutely, if it's in site plan regulations, they do have to present building elevations. You know, it's not something that you can say waive to a later date. I think they should show it.
Okay, but if people know that they can come to us informally, I would think that would be helpful.
Yeah, and if they're not ready yet to come up with architectural drawings of the building that they plan to put forward on the application, they have a case for the application in every other respect. Informal hearing, they can discuss the problem that they can't give us a design, architectural design for the building. design for the building, but we'd like to have a waiver, we'll work with you, and have conditions on approval. We, we'll work with the applicant, is what I'm trying to say. It's got to be an informal process.
There has, for me, there has to be enough of an architectural rendering to even be clear if an applicant is meeting the height requirement.
Exactly.
Right.
You know, is all of your mechanical on the roof? Is it a flat roof? No. All of those things. But I'm still not looking at whether it's ephesus or stucco or block or clappard. Very clear in the design standards, the siding materials are not permitted. Anything else is fair game. So getting into that level of minutia probably isn't worth a lot of staff time. Is it not metal?
Exactly.
Okay, we're good.
No different than a site, than a setback regulation. If they can't make the setback, they have to go for a waiver or go to the zoning board of adjustment.
Correct.
And if this, if the architectural standards say you cannot have sheet, whatever, sheet metal siding on your building, they can't come to us with that as an app, without a waiver request.
Okay.
So I have, I have a few points I'd like to make, in that to place Vaughn, who is our architect, in a position where she has to make a decision, may or may not be a good thing. It may end up being that she has a conflict of interest and says, I can't do it. And we then end up having to look at the idea that she may not stay on the board forever, and how do we deal with that? So these are issues which we need to realize. And, you know, I don't think it's a huge issue at this time, but these are things that need to be thought about.
My thought, without mentioning this to Vaughn until now, would be to come up with a way that the design standards could be formulated into a checklist of sorts. And work with Vaughn, Vaughn's project, if you will, you know, do we think we're going to catch 60% of the fish with this checklist? And if so, yeah, this works. Let's try it with the next application.
Yeah, that's where I'm going. I think, I think the expectation for the planner is confidence from the board. And I know we had a dry run with Matt with an application that was a mock demonstration. We went through and we approved it, and we could see what deficiencies came up. And therefore, we were able to coalesce on the main objective. And I think maybe what we need is, we need to do another dry run with the board and Tavis to go over the document and come up with that checklist so that we can move forward. Because applicability to locations is a pretty significant case, where if we're just going to say it doesn't apply over there, it does apply over there, we need to know that. And, you know, applicants come in, and it's generally a pre, pre-discussion when Tavis does a, an application with somebody. So they can get that out in the open well in advance.
Yeah, I think we have to be, have to remember that site plan review regulations apply everywhere. If there are parts of them that may not appear to be applicable, applicant applies for a waiver and explains why.
Yeah. Okay. If you want to work on a checklist, that would be great.
I would much rather work on a checklist than trying to establish a new committee, yes.
Okay, all right.
In fact, yeah, Mike recommended not making it overly arduous and not forming a committee. Keep it simple. Definitely help them early on, offer to help them. And checklist is a good starting point. But they should start that discussion right away.
Okay, very good. And can, we go to the master plan now. Peter, did you have something you wanted to say about the master plan?
The master plan committee now has four members to it, and that's a good thing. At the same time, there seems to be a problem with getting data for us to analyze. Some of it seems to be associated with the fact that the various people in charge of the areas are working on budgetary issues, and therefore, they're more concerned about that. And in some ways, therefore, what we end up saying is, or the committee should have started asking these questions four or five months ago, so that we would be looking at issues. And right now, we're probably in budgets which are reasonably fixed. And so therefore, there is nothing that we're asking now which is going to change for this budgetary cycle.
Okay, but what have you done so far, Tavis? Did you send something out to everyone?
I put together the email. I told the board I would send out to each of the same people that were originally asked for the top three priorities. And I have had very limited feedback. I will say that EDC this morning brought up, brought up the topic, and they are going to see, you know, these are the three we had. Let's, you know, plan on discussing this at the next meeting, see if we're changing our three, modifying our three, et cetera, and then they will comment back.
Okay, so we're going to get something from.
There's, there's progress.
Okay.
But it's, and there are reasons why there isn't a whole lot of progress. As in, we're in the budgetary cycle, which therefore is.
Well, we're in the budgetary cycle, and it's, I think it's easy to say, well, I'm in the middle of budget. I don't have time to look at this list. But I also think it's possible for people to look at their list of priorities and say, oh, this does line up with what I've been fighting for at the budget committee.
And that, in fact, is what we're trying to find out.
Correct. So it might be that you and I need to sit down and look at CIP, this list, and see what things are rising to the top.
Who's on the master plan implementation committee?
Linda Murray, Kathy Barnard, myself, and Dan.
Loons.
Dave.
Dave. Dave Mar.
Dave Mar, yeah, okay. Okay. Next item on the agenda is an update on 79E, the RSA 79E. The board had asked me to send a memo to the Board of Selectmen about the adoption of 79E for, basically, to help with the housing affordability issue. And so I did. Tavis and I went several weeks ago, I guess now. And basically, what I did was point out to them why this, we felt this was important. And basically, it's in three places in the master plan. It's in the economic development chapter, the community, or the housing chapter, and future land use. And we asked them to consider adopting this. The, I didn't feel as if we were actually welcomed with, with open arms. I was a little surprised, because it seems like the board should be able to have discussions on, on issues that we find important. So, but they did give us some suggestions. So I think that probably that's what we need to work on. One of them is this density that we're next on the agenda. And so we are working, working on that. And in, in the memo that I sent to the selectmen, I said that, you know, part of what the statute said that has to be done is that they have to propose the warrant article. And we, at the same time, would be working on a zoning ordinance. So, but basically, what else, what other point should I?
I think the critical point is, they were open to hearing the proposal. They had a couple of questions on the proposal.
Yeah.
And I think it's important that the planning board know that you were heard at that level. And I would anticipate further advisory needs coming from the selectmen as they move forward.
Yeah, okay. Yep, go ahead.
Did the Board of Selectmen have a particular reason why they weren't prepared to put a warrant article asking the town to adopt 79E 4B?
I think March.
Yeah, they, they felt that it was premature, that we really should wait until this thing is enacted. And that basically, I think they wanted more information from, from us. So I don't think it would happen this year, but possibly, if we can get them more information. I mean, we talked about just looking at density in the central business district, Bay Street and Wolfboro Falls. So those are the areas we were thinking about. So I, I think we just have to keep tugging along on what we think is important, and go back to them and, and have another discussion.
Yeah, I think there was some confusion about what has been enacted or what will be enacted. I think the biggest pushback I heard was that it would be premature to put something in front of the voters that would enable the board to do something that hadn't yet been authorized at the state level. I think there's actually a paragraph that applies a month after town meeting. But for, for a fact, there are many municipalities in New Hampshire that have already, based on the adoption to this point, enacted this predominantly larger urban areas. But there are many towns that are already running with this ball.
Yeah, I'll point out that 79E 4B has indeed been enacted. The governor has signed it. Its effective date is April of next year, I believe. But it's been enacted, meaning that town governments can adopt 79E 4B now, with the understanding that it can't be applied until the act actually comes into effect.
And if you think about the tax year, that is exactly why that's happening.
And the longer the Wolfboro waits to enact 79E 4B, the longer it falls behind other towns who will enact the legislation, because it's designed specifically to let towns attract development into areas, in their central areas, central business districts, which are currently not amenable to development. We should be working, in my opinion, the selectmen should put 79E 4B up on this current warrant. At the same time, the planning board should be working towards changing the density requirements, so that come March of next year, we have an effective 79E incentive for developers to come in. And we have density changes, allowing them to do what they need to do without obstructions from zoning. It will go together in tandem. The current, just one second, the current proposal by the Board of Selectmen to wait threatens the loss of that timing and leaves us with another year to play catch up. Thank you.
Brad, did you want to, want to add something? I mean, you were there.
You really pretty much covered it all. The, kind of the gist of the meeting was, as you said, the board really wanted to get more information on 79E itself. And also wanted to kind of let some other towns do it, do it first, see how it works out and stuff there. Now, Michael, you just said about adopting 79E 4B.
That's the new.
I guess a question I would have, could you adopt just one small section like that? Or do you have to adopt the entire 79E?
Well, that's a question for your lawyer to tell you. But as far as I know, the only change is the addition of paragraph B to 79E. You would be adopting that paragraph, or you might simply write the article to say, we're adopting the new and improved 79E.
I think this is some of that information that probably wanted to get more of and stuff that.
Where, where is, if I may, and I don't mean to be cross-examining, but if, where is the Board of Selectmen going to look for that information? To the planning board? Or is it to your own lawyer? Or to simply reading the statute, which is self-explanatory?
I would assume we'd probably reach out to an attorney for.
Right.
Input there.
And, and I think to the planning board.
Yes, oh, yes, definitely.
Right. So.
I think.
And there was some concern about the taxing, people would be relieved of tax.
And that's really where the rubber hits the road. There's, all of 79E is an economic revitalization tool that the town can avail itself of, to the extent the town wants to avail itself. So really, the, the, the work involved is, you know, is, are the selectmen going to grant more tax relief to historic preservation, or adaptive reuse, or housing? And you really then get to use the master plan as a guide, help set, you know, where is the governor on this? Governor and motor speak, not legal speak.
The selectmen have already adopted 79E and are applying it, barn ordinance.
Correct.
Or tax relief, or renovation of historic barns. Not as if the selectmen are unfamiliar with 79E.
Right.
As written prior to the adoption of paragraph B. Paragraph B simply extends that same kind of an allowance to other structures in town which are not barns.
Correct.
Okay, anyway, we need to get back to them with more information. So I guess we will, we will do that.
But what a wonderful segue.
Yes, right.
Color is mad. Well, I wouldn't have chosen them, but that's. Guess we'll get explained. Oh, yes, the acreage side. That's fine.
You can tell by the legend, I broke them out by acreage. This took a lot longer than it should have, and I'm working on an update to the GIS software. But that's why some of the colors are broken out. So to make more sense of it, there are 168 parcels in the CBD. The largest parcel is 6.25 acres. The smallest parcel is .047 acres.
How many parcels?
100, it's on the handout next to you, 168.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
So just for fun, I started putting together the, the bit of a table here. For those that are less than one-tenth of an acre, there are 29 parcels in the CBD, with an average size of .07 acres, 79, which in total, those 29 parcels are 17% of the district. If you expand to a whopping .2 acre, so less than a quarter acre, you pick up another 59 parcels, and you've already exceeded 50% of the district. But more than half of the district is less than a quarter acre in size. Would become relevant soon. Between .23, between .2 and .3, you pick up another 29 parcels, another 17% of the district. So you see where this is going rather quickly. So down to the narrative, only 15 parcels in the CBD are one acre in size or larger, and they represent less than 10% of the district. 153 parcels of the 168 are less than an acre, with an average size of less than a quarter acre. Anyone see why I'm going through this number the way I am? If you look down at that .23 acres, which is the 153 parcels, at the current density, those parcels are allowed to have 1.38 units. And you wonder why there are no residential units downtown. You cannot even have two. If you take the same .23, and at the last meeting, the last workshop meeting, there was a discussion of going to 30 units per acre, those same quarter acre parcels could support seven units. Seven units is not the 30 units that got everyone scared the last time I said 30 units per acre. If you were to, I didn't write this down, because it looks really scary. But if you take all of those parcels at .23 acres, 153 parcels, with an average size of .23, and you multiply it out, you get 1,500 units. Yes, that's a scary number. But that also requires the complete removal of everything else commercial in the CBD. No more ice cream, no more donuts, no more law offices, real estate offices, et cetera. So opening the door to 30 units per acre is really only allowing a parcel of at least a quarter. a quarter acre. Remember, that's less than 40% of the district, having maybe seven units. The justification behind going to 30 units per acre and getting that number up to seven is very specific because when you look at 79E 4B and others, a third of the units need to be affordable to qualify for programs like that. So, you have to get mathematically high enough so you can have a third of something. Does 30 seem less scary to the board now?
Well, and you were also, according to the minutes, were asked to look at the 30 per acre, 20 per acre. That was the suggestion.
I can do it visually, but the short answer of that is that is a function of the size of the units in the building. So, if you, again, as I did at the last meeting, you look at the, okay, it's dark now, but if you look at the building across the street, if you're doing 500 square foot units, maybe you could put four units in the building. Go down to 250 square foot units, you have twice that many. But really, the projects look the same. I did talk to Tony Fallon during the charrette, and he sent me an example of a project in Farmington that was designed at 30 units per acre. It looks like a series of colonial cottages. Common land, common sewer, common water, but half the projects at 15 units an acre. Talkingly, it looks just like 30, but the units themselves are twice the size. So, structurally, nothing changes. You can still apply all the design guidelines, et cetera.
And allowing 30 units per acre doesn't mean builders have to build up to 30 per acre.
No, because what the board had talked about is perhaps it remains six units per acre. But if you were to do workforce, elderly, affordable, non-transient, and agree to a project that way, you could avail yourselves of up to 30 units per acre, perhaps to be in concert with the tax incentive, et cetera.
Do you have a sense, looking at Central Business District, the historical use of these properties, which properties would be most likely 79E 4B were adopted? Density was changed to 30 units per acre. Looked like they would be the places that workforce, affordable, elderly, non-transient housing could go into?
I would start at the .5 and get smaller. Because if you look at the parcels that are over it...
All right, I don't mean by lot size. I can do that exercise myself. But historically, some of these parcels are not likely to change their current use because they are either successful, long-established, churches, whatever it might be.
Shopping centers, yeah.
Take them out of the mix. What in this mix here, which of these properties could possibly become the site for a housing project for some, of some sort? A loaded term, but you know what I mean?
Well, to take some of the easy ones out, if you take out, Terry insisted that I label the streets. I was convinced the board would be able to orient itself.
Which one?
So, if you look at, you know, we talked about a shopping plaza. So, this is the liquor store and Bee's Market and things like that. You have Hunters. You have the large project behind that. Harvest Market, yep, sorry. And then you jump over and...
Harvest Market is right here.
Correct. And then you take out Town Hall. Take out the school.
Playground. Town Hall, town-owned properties.
So, realistically, the structures that are left are the older, perhaps, I don't want to say original, but older residential structures, at least residential...
It would be nice to know specifically which ones we're talking about.
But the point being, I think the, my recommendation to the board would be the board looking to permit people to put units in any of the structures.
Well, I think that when, let's assume that the board adopts the idea of 30 units per acre, CBD 1. The next step is going to, is, will require us, we really feel that, selling it to the town. And one of the ways of selling it to the town is to show where it would impact, which, which properties would be impacted by the change. Showing them a map of acreage density is helpful, but showing them, showing us which properties are likely to be affected five, 10 years from now, which properties are not likely to be affected gives us a better sense of what the impact of these changes would likely to be in the neighborhood.
I would suggest that's a very tricky thing to do, to guess where the market is going to go in the next five years.
No, not guessing the market, but I'll make a simple assumption. Town-owned properties are most likely going to remain town-owned properties for the foreseeable future.
Correct.
Hunters, eh, Harvest Market, eh, but more than likely are going to remain what they are for the near future. Playgrounds, ditto.
Oh, you just mean take out the ones that aren't likely to change?
Exactly.
Not is Kurt in the law office going to want two units in his upstairs?
No, not at all. But that's, that's a potential business that could be subject to change. That there may be an economic benefit to doing something this sort of thing went through. But the properties that could not, are most likely not going to change.
You can do that.
And then we, then we get a sense of likely impact.
Again, a way to look at that with the map that's in front of you is to start at the .4 and then shrink your lot size. Because the ones that are, the ones that have large established commercial entities or town properties that are not going to change are the big blobs.
Exactly.
So, you're into the greens and the blues primarily, which is the vast majority of the district. But what gets tricky is that they're all very small.
Okay, well...
You know, one of the suggestions that was made at EDC this morning was to say, "Well, don't say 30 units per acre. Think about how many half acres you'd need to get a unit." Well, that's exactly the same thing. It's just saying it differently. So, I'm happy to put together an elevator speech on what it is. The, what drove it home for me is you look at the average lot, seven units is the max. Seven units is still probably in today's market or in the next five, 10 years' market going to be a very questionable number without somebody willing to do affordable.
Yeah, agreed, agreed.
And I think the control, the planning board needs, and the board has talked about it, is making sure that they don't be susceptible to transient occupancy.
Okay, the suggestion for the 20 per acre, I really think we need to look at that because that's, you start out with 20 per acre, down to a half acre, and that's 10, and then down to about 10,000, and that's about five. So...
Well, if you use Tavis's calculations, if you're going for 20 units...
That's four and a half.
That's about four and a half.
So, it's four units.
Yeah, and that's, that's...
And a third of that would have to be affordable.
Exactly. So, that's kind of not partially attractive, I would think. And remember, something else we should think about, this, this scenario was coupled to passage of 79E 4B.
But not necessarily.
Yeah, what I'm getting at is...
I don't think it should be.
No. What I'm thinking is if we think in terms of density, changing density applicable to the entire town, maybe one or two exceptions, district exceptions, then we're, we're going to be presented with parcel sizes that are not as constrained as they are in the Central Business District.
No, but where it changes, if you get out into the RA and R zones, you get into the 50 and 60 acre parcels, vast majority, and so it's going to look like a ridiculous density. But then you have to subtract from that the cost of your modern septic systems for that density. So, the cost is going to go way up, which is inversely going to impact the density. Because it's not going to be marketable to put even seven units out on, you know, at the outskirts of Center Street.
Well, no, you wouldn't be dealing with seven units. You'd be dealing with maybe 17 units.
Oh, I said seven. Not 7-0, seven.
Seven.
Seven units on the system is going to, that's an expensive system. Again, it's a function of, well, how many bedrooms are these? We haven't gotten into, are we talking about single-bedroom units, two-bedroom units?
Okay, well, we're talking about workforce housing in Elway.
Correct.
Does everybody agree with that?
I thought we were also talking about anything more affordable.
Yeah. Basically, but basically affordable housing.
So, one of the things that could be put in there...
Affordable housing is up to 120% of the median.
Yeah.
So, that's one thing that we hadn't put in at the last discussion. We talked about workforce, elderly, affordable, non-transient. You could throw in the HUD definition, say you only get this density if you meet...
Well, it has to be long-term.
Correct. So, you'd be into it 40 years. Now, there are communities that say, "You came to the planning board, you told us this was going to be affordable housing. You let three units go last month, we're pulling your approval." Wolfboro doesn't want to get into that. So, I think we need to build it into the approval process. We're only giving you the benefit of this density if you agree to term workforce, elderly, et cetera. There's a couple of other definitions that have to get infused into the regs to support the density change. They don't require, you know, it's basically HUD rules as amended. Any year, the applicable standard applies to achieve...
Well, that's why you're here.
I'm willing. I just need some consistency on a number. You know, if the board believes that the town is going to have pushback because, you know, the crazy planner is talking about these giant apartments downtown, maybe the board's intention is to say, "Look, we're thinking, you know, 300 to 400 square foot one-bedroom units." You can whittle it down that far in the regulations if you want to.
So...
But I also see this as an option. 79E 4B is very specific to a target population.
We're not talking about 79E.
I didn't say we were. That, that language is talking about a very specific population. I think there's also a disparity in Wolfboro housing between those that don't qualify for affordable but also can't do the mansion. You know, the, you know, two young working couple with the first child or two, and their gross is $60,000 or $75,000 a year, they're not moving here either. So, there's another aspect to this bubble. They're also not going to want the third floor walk-up in the Avery Building. Nothing against the Avery Building.
So, actually, let's, let's talk about that kind of a building because that is the traditional prototype for more affordable, let's not worry about what the income is, housing. So, that let's say you still have a liquor store on the bottom, and now you have two layers of apartments on top of that. I mean, we need to consider that because that is a normal way that towns like ours develop.
You've got elevators, you've got fire sprinklers, you've got the big investment. That's what...
But you still have that big commercial base with those other layers on top of it.
So, similar in the Bay Street, no, Wolfboro Falls, residential apartments permitted not on the first floor, see six units per acre. So, that's something that could be built into CBD.
As we look forward, the idea that we would have more apartments, more housing space in the center of town, which is where many of the workforce housing people are going to be working, it means those people can be walking or biking or whatever to the places where they're going, and this is something that should be encouraged.
Good. Have parking management plans in sight planned to help the board address that. So, it can't be, I don't think it's a fair argument to say the planning board is looking at this crazy number of X units per acre, that's going to explode our parking problem.
Well, no, we have parking management.
Yeah. The one thing to be clear on, this was also something that came up at the selectman presentation on 79E 4B. The public opinion might be much more receptive to more workforce housing if we can guarantee that it is the Wolfboro employees that are in that housing.
Well, you can't do that.
But you can't really do that. The concern was if Wolfboro perhaps acts too quickly, depending on what your version of too quickly is, Wolfboro might provide housing that then helps subsidize, if you will, Dover, Rochester, Moulton Borough, et cetera. Can't control that.
Crazy to be talking that way because we're all going to sink if we do.
John, did you want to say something?
I'm just trying to digest this.
Okay, Brad?
Yeah, I just did some quick math, looking at this, you know, taking out, looking at another perspective here, too. If we take these three categories that you spelled out for us, Tavis, you know, the, on the sheet here, the 29 parcels at average .07 acres, 59 at .14. Do the math on those, how many units you can get in there. On those 29 units that are less than a tenth of an acre, then I let you put two units per acre, per lot there, which isn't really going to work very well. And the 59 parcels that are between a tenth and two tenths of an acre, you're allowed up to, comes up to 4.2 units, which is going to be four units per acre. That covers three-quarters of the district there. What we're talking about is going to have between two and four units maximum allowed in there.
I picked 30 as something I thought the board would be able to digest. I'm perfectly willing to raise that number.
Well, also, we have, I, sorry, Brad, I didn't mean to...
Well, that's, I just wanted to kind of, those numbers kind of made me look at it a little bit differently here, too, and stuff, because I was originally thinking, you know, 30 units per acre, that's, that's just huge density in there and stuff. Then when you see these types of numbers, how they're going to apply here, most developers aren't going to even, they're going to look at this and they're going to say...
It's not high enough.
It's not viable, it's not going to work.
Well, and part of the other...
These 15 parcels of one acre or greater in size, I mean, that's 15 parcels.
Correct.
15 is 15. So, what about those?
45 units.
Okay, so...
Well, that's where we run into the historical usage of the land. Remember when we had the petition warrant article to put a drive-through restaurant into the Central Business District called for only on lots of an acre or more in size? And when I looked at the lots an acre or more in size, I found that only, I think, five of them qualified because they were currently in use that was in flux. The other unit, the other lots in that district were long-established lots, churches, parks, whatever. And it turned out that of the five, four of them were owned by a particular individual who had an interest in a drive-through restaurant. Point being this, that we shouldn't focus only on CBD 1 here. These density changes should be town-wide unless we want to restrict them.
Well, right, right now, it's interesting the way the zoning has been put together over the years. Right now, only CBD talks about single-family duplex and multifamily up to six units per acre. Every other zoning section or zoning district is silent on multifamily, or if it says multifamily, it doesn't prescribe a density. Then you have to fall back to a section of the ordinance that maybe four of us know about, 175, 143, which captures BRR, some others, and all commercial districts other than Wolfboro Falls and CBD, and says two units per acre. And then Wolfboro Falls and CBD are at six units per acre.
That's why we're looking at...
Yeah, exactly. Those are...
My point being, if, another way to address it would not be to look simply at CBD, but to update 175, 143B, I might be off by a letter, to say that the Wolfboro Falls and CBD have the potential increase in density. Or, my recommendation at the last memo was to look at putting the highest density achievable in CBD, step it down into Bay Street Limited, Wolfboro Falls, and let it step down naturally again to where it is as you move further away from the core, which is consistent with where the state is making recommendations. It puts the density where the utilities are.
Susan, did you want to say something?
I just think it would be easier to digest potential impact if we had this map adapted to the applicable properties that could be affected and how. It's great that we understand lot size. I appreciate you doing that, but, you know, Clark Plaza, okay, what's the deal with Clark Plaza? Is that a potential? I see it's a huge lot over there, so...
It's actually, you bring up a very good point. I don't know of any... It's actually, you bring up a very good point. I don't know of any actual 100% reliable data the town has about how many units actually exist on any of these parcels. I know that there are apartments of some form or function in or around the liquor store.
I think these smaller ones.
I know there are some apartments.
We don't have to worry about as much because they're so small.
Correct.
But the bigger ones, those are the ones that we have to pay attention to because they could make a real impact on the town. So if we could have specific information about some of these bigger lots, that could really make a huge difference if we increase the density the way we're talking.
Yeah, and that really is what our job is.
That's what I would like to see.
Well, I am willing to take a couple of broad strokes and take out the town-owned properties or those that don't really seem ripe for transition. But I will bring up that when, as part of the charrette, you know, the one-and-a-half acre corner.
That's an opportunity, absolutely. What about Clark Plaza?
Right in that, it's right here.
That one, and what about the big red one?
This one-and-a-half acre piece that was highlighted as a potential, almost three-story
It absolutely is.
workforce housing parcel.
What about Clark Plaza? What about this big red blob? What's the deal there?
It's mostly parking lot and the car wash, but yes.
So yes, meaning potential?
If the market were there.
And if the owner wanted to do something.
Yeah, right.
Have to remember that. That's why I think we should be looking at the ownership of these parcels. We'll get a very good idea of the potential or change use. We know the ownership. But remember when, just one final proviso and then I'll shut up. We're focusing on central business district. We have an entire town where we should be thinking in terms of changing density regulations because we're not going to be able to get enough workforce housing here to satisfy the current need for housing in town, which is only going to grow as the years go by.
Certainly. For example, you have a manufactured housing overlay district that says therein, any manufactured housing park or project needs to meet the base zoning requirements. That's not how those projects work.
No.
Those projects don't put a manufactured home on a two-acre lot with 200 feet of frontage.
Well, remember.
There are lots of things to finesse in the zoning as you look at density.
And by way of apology, many of the zoning ordinances that we're arguing about now that need to be fixed or changed were in place at a time when the current circumstance wasn't, didn't prevail. It wasn't even anticipated. So, yeah, we have to change because zoning, zoning is a live thing and it changes and it grows over time.
I'm going to disagree with Mike talking about that we need to look at the particular ownership of a particular piece of property because that is not going to be eternal, and it really is the present use. In other words, if you have a Dunkin' Donuts on a piece of property, that probably is not going to change. The particular ownership is irrelevant because that can change tomorrow.
Correct. Well, correct. I took it as the Harvest Market versus whoever the literal owner of Harvest Market is. Yeah.
To get right with Peter, let me change ownership to use.
And how do we address mixed use? How do you figure out units per acre? Do you count one for the shopping center on the grounds?
This would be residential units per acre in addition to. So how that gets controlled is how you deal with the parking management system. So if you have 3,000 square feet of retail on the first floor and then 6,000 square feet of apartments, it's not 9,000 square feet of parking, it's 3,000 at the retail calc and then the parking requirement.
What is our height requirement now, 30 to 35?
30 feet if you're flat, 35 if you're a 10, 12, or better.
Right.
So nothing is getting taller. I have a feeling that would be a literal third rail, particularly in the central business district.
Right. And we do have a zoning regulation now, the residential zone, village residential and residential. And that's been in place for quite some time. No one has even really taken a look at it.
That's two units an acre, yeah.
What?
It's two units an acre.
So again, I guess the smaller lots, I am not that concerned about because these zoning changes are not going to hurt the town. These larger lots that are potential to make a real impact on the town, that's what we need to focus on, the worst-case scenario. What could happen?
Yeah. But from a developer's standpoint, if there are five or six .07 acre pieces next to each other, normal trend is to purchase them all and then put a project on it. But if you actually look at the cost per acre in Wolfboro, that's not going to be happening very often.
So we don't need to worry about that then?
You don't need to worry about it as much, but if all of a sudden people say, oh, Wolfboro is the workforce housing hub of New England, you might have someone buy a block. But then you have your design standards that help you address how that block looks.
So what further, what further or what guidance do you need from the board to get going on this project?
I am going to take this and pull out those that are, in my opinion, least susceptible to change.
In this district, but what about the rest of the town?
It will come up. Well, the next step is usually, because normally you have your downtown, which is your densest, and then you relax. The question is how much is, what is the board going to recommend or what does the board think the town may accept as the densest? And then you relax based off that number.
Your recommendation is 30, right?
Recommendation is 30. I think you could, each one of these, in order to do this, what I do is I tell the computer to find each of these thresholds. I don't think there actually is a .1 acre parcel. I think it was .00983675, et cetera. So I define these thresholds. Each one of these represents a group of parcels, and I can print it out in a spreadsheet and then show what the density of each of those parcels is. In addition, pull out those parcels that are least susceptible to change.
And the most susceptible. We would like to see the ones that are the most susceptible to change. I know, you know more than we do. You have people coming in and talking to you. You see what opportunities exist out there.
A lot, I know, a lot of that is where's the market and what structure is on, what structure is presently there and what structure, what is in that structure? You know, so if you look at the Avery building, it's got stairs. I think it, no, but it's sprinkled, it has a number of things that make that an easy structure, a more easy structure to flip over than blacks.
Okay.
But I don't want to make those qualitative calls.
You know what? I'm not as concerned about an Avery building as I am about a huge parcel like Clark Plaza that could potentially become a monstrosity. You know, it's the worst-case scenarios that I believe we have to start with and work our way back just to make sure that we avoid evil happening here. We don't want evil happening here and some sort of bad thing.
Well, okay, so Clark's Plaza, the red parcels, I said 3.1 to 6 acres. There's one at about 3.1 and two at just over 6, which is pretty obvious in the image. So
And town-owned?
Six acres at 30 units would be 180 units.
Which of the three big red ones are town-owned?
No.
No.
None?
Well, the park.
Yeah.
No, this is an office complex. This is.
So none?
Majority of this, I think, probably is town.
That's Foss.
Yes.
Right.
And then this is Clark Plaza.
So there's.
So one out of the three.
Two, maybe. But you'd have to evict, this is a whole condo complex over here.
One out of the three is town-owned.
So I don't know if one, I mean, if you think of it in simplest terms, is 180 affordable housing units in Wolfboro a bad thing?
This one has.
The other way to address it would be residential units not on the first floor at a density not to exceed 30 units per acre if workforce affordable, non-transient, 40-year under HUD guidelines.
This piece over here, the, I don't know what it's called, the Mill Street Plaza, whatever that is, that is deed restricted against residential.
So we're down to one piece.
Yeah.
And is it this piece here?
Yeah.
It's this one.
Okay, so this is our biggest area of exposure, right here.
So we have to also look at as opportunity because it's the opportunity.
If putting 180.
We want to have some more affordable.
It could be, absolutely. I just think this should be a big area of focus, that's all, just to make sure that if this is what the pathway we're going down, this is our biggest area of exposure. It could be awesome, or it might not be.
Going back to the example that Mike brought up of the drive-through restaurants on an acre or more, et cetera, you could put, Dan's going to throw something at me, 60 units an acre, but it's only applicable on half an acre or less. But really, all we're doing is trying to micromanage.
Yep.
Which, you know, the total number of units you're actually trying to create. So.
There's a lot of weeds we can get in, we can get even deeper into. Not sure we want to, but we could. In the interest, sorry, Julie, go ahead.
Is the number that we're talking about for that particular parcel 14 total?
Which one?
The tan one for, on the corner there? Or is that a 30?
That would be 30 units.
That would be 30, okay.
This one? If, but remember, that's the maximum possible. We haven't contemplated parking, stormwater, mechanical setbacks, anything. I mean, this doesn't mean, even if it became law tomorrow, somebody would not be able to come in and put 180 units where the liquor store is.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I'd like to make. This, right now, this is an academic discussion. We're kind of talking about theoretical numbers and possibilities and all. And in the interest of closure, I'd like to suggest that the board ask the planner to continue working on this project and use the 30 units per number that he recommends. Board should not be frightened by that because, again, it's an academic exercise. Look at the consequences of 30 and say, oh my God, and tell them to go back and do it for 20 or 15. But in the interest of getting something started, let's stick with 30.
And did you say that this?
And I guess, I guess my concern, I'm just trying to read the room, anticipating the room growing into deliberate obsession size room. Everyone is responding to it as though, oh my God, we don't want this. So I'm trying to, or I'm afraid of this. And I'm trying to balance that with the master plan that, I know it's not the law, but everyone generally consented to the master plan saying we need to encourage this. And as soon as we start showing how to open the window to some of the stuff changing, I mean, other things you could put in there would be up to 30 units provided you gift 300 acres of conservation land. That's an extreme. But we could include with it, you know, if there's not sidewalk on your frontage, you need to put in the sidewalk. If you, if you could accommodate a trolley stop, bike racks, streetscape, all of these things are things that can come with this density allowance.
Right.
You can actually build a community around tricking people into building workforce housing. I know that phrase will come back on me, but.
But it is our job to make the case to the town if we decide to come up with a proposal, um, 30 acres, 30 units, I beg your pardon, that's payable. And if we are able to convince the town that it's a good idea, the town will vote for it. And if we are unable to do that, they'll say no. But any change of this sort, which is kind of fundamental, is going to generate resistance because we don't like to change much.
Well, in addition to augmenting the map, I'm going to flush out this table a little bit more because I think it's only when, you know, just as Brad did, well, if 29 of them are only at .1, .1 times, well, that doesn't work. So I say it's going to be the ones that are smaller that are going to get, the reason for 30 is there are so many that are small. But once you look at the math, it's really going to be somewhere in that middle acreage sweet spot that actually would allow someone to do a project with workforce housing.
Is the Wolfboro Falls the only district that says businesses on the bottom floor only?
I think Bay Street also allows multifamily, not on the first.
Does anybody remember why downtown it doesn't say that?
Yeah, I know Bay Street.
Yeah, but why, why isn't the central business?
To go with that, CBD currently allows conversion of one permitted use to another, provided there's no exterior change or parking. So there's actually nothing preventing Main Street right now from going to.
All apartments.
Round-the-sky apartments. So that might be something else we need to get in the mix.
Yeah, because that would keep all the businesses in the business district.
My comment, I think, whenever the last time we talked about this, was not to be shocked at 30 units per acre, but to know what a building or what a project, and you mentioned one, what does it look like? It would be good to have a picture of that one you talked about, and then maybe some mixed-use ones.
The reason I didn't bring pictures of the one that Tony gave me pictures of is it was a greenfield development and it was not applicable to the one zone. In my, in my head or in my thinking, none of the buildings look any different downtown. It really takes more of a form-based code allowance where we don't really care what's in it. It looks the same. Because since I've been here, nobody wants downtown to change. It needs to look and function the same way. I got ice cream there. I should be able to take my grandkid there and my great-grandkid there. Ice cream place can't move. But nobody has said, I'd hate it if there was an apartment over it. But that's where this number comes from, to help facilitate the people, whether they're serving ice cream or they own the ice cream shop or whatever the business is, to get some units in there because people don't have a place to live.
I agree with Vaughn. I mean, if we had more of a visual rendering of some examples, you know, again, take Clark Plaza. I know it's easy to be scared of what could potentially happen there if we change the density, but it could be wonderful and a lot more attractive than it is now. So we have to, there are a lot of things to consider that could.
And to that end, I mean, to be perfectly candid, I don't know if someone decided to buy that plaza, if it would even make any financial sense whatsoever to tear down everything that's there, renegotiate the state's lease for the liquor market and liquor store and everything else, to simply put 180 units in it, a third of which are market rate. That's an expensive building to contemplate.
Oh, well, you never know.
Well, and it's a swamp.
And it's a swamp, so.
Yeah, but so is Chicago.
But I mean, that corner lot there, if you figure in that, if you have, you know, the 30 per, you know, that gets cut down to like in half, and then if we have businesses on the bottom floor, that reduces the units again. Then it's a mixed thing, and it's like, really, it's not that many units when you get the whole thing on.
So if you think about it, right now, multifamily requires one parking spot per unit plus one for every three.
Say that again?
You need one parking spot per unit and one guest space for every three units. How big's a parking stall? Nine by 40, okay? That's the nine by 20 plus the 20-foot backup aisle that you need. So if you think about it, 15 units is how many parking stalls?
20?
20.
Something.
20. So nine by 40 times 20, plus the building, plus the setbacks, probably not getting 30 units on an acre with a 35-foot height limit. 35 feet is too many for a push. So it really is just something that looks like a big house, function of how big the units are inside.
So in some ways, what you're saying is the number could be reduced to 20 with really no change in the number of units in a particular place. We can look at what the numbers are. I don't need to, we don't need to figure it out.
I think practically, I think practically speaking, even at 30, with all the other requirements that somebody has to meet with 35, you're not going to get close to 30. That's why the, one of the reasons the number is as high as it is.
Yeah, and that's why.
It needs to provide the incentive.
And why wouldn't you be so frightened of it?
But I will play checkerboard with the map and add some more details to what it could look like. It's, it's hard to describe what it would look like because you don't know what somebody might do, but the idea is that buildings don't have to change. Again, I'll bring it up. I had three or four phone calls in the end of last week and yesterday about five different properties on Lainer Street that simply want to add one unit. Look what color Lainer Street is. Can't. They can't.
And what about here?
Some of them are statistically so small you can't have one unit and they have a duplex.
And what about here?
Never had anyone call about putting housing there. Never had anyone call about putting housing there. And that might simply be because the number's at six and it doesn't make any sense.
Okay, so we need to look at the definition of affordable workforce housing, take out nonprofit and elderly.
Yeah, because if you get into the federal level of elderly housing, twenty percent of it, twenty percent of the units don't have to be fifty-five and over. All sorts of balances and things you have to look.
Now, what was that?
If you have a fifty-five and over project.
Yeah.
With federal funding, I believe twenty percent of the units don't have to meet the elderly quality.
But that's not in.
That's not what we're talking about.
That's not in our zoning, right?
Correct. But we need to, we need to be careful which, which terms we apply. Make sure we get the required or the anticipated result.
Okay, well.
I'm kind of all for staying on the other side and involving more people rather than just saying, just the elderly or just the poor. You know what I mean?
Remember, this is, this is little A affordable, not big A affordable. This is not federal subsidized housing. This is not Section Eight. This is not projects.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm more for that mixed.
This is people in the forty to fifty thousand a year range, which by local standards is hurting. When you look at, when your area median income is eighty thousand dollars.
Well, do we want another definition for workforce? I mean, somebody down here mentioned it.
Well, there's the HUD definition. And that's the eighty percent.
Talking about our own definition, I was talking about.
Yeah, we could, we could come up with our own.
I'm happy with.
I don't, I don't think any of us on this board, with perhaps the exception of you, have looked at the affordable housing definition well enough to know, change it or not.
Yeah, right, well, yeah.
So, you know, I, I think that's one of those weeds that we should try to stay out of tonight.
Okay, well, would everybody please take a look at it?
Affordable housing?
The definitions for elderly and workforce and one seventy-five.
Coming back to the next work session with the map, the more details, suite of definitions, and be able to come up with some next steps.
Yeah, right. And we talked a little about inclusionary zoning. That's the one where they're just required to have a certain number of workforce.
So one of the projects the board had asked me to look into was revamping the elderly affordable inclusionary zone. I think probably one of the easiest ways to do that is ball it up and come up with the direction we want to go. And perhaps the existing zones get modified into a new version.
Yep.
But again, part of that becomes very critical because if you look at some of the affordable and elderly sections now, if somebody comes in at thirty units per acre and then apply the elderly, they actually get more units. I'm already hearing that perhaps thirty is top end.
What definition are you looking at?
I'm, I'm not. I'm trying to remember the sections that talk about the percentages of affordable and they talk about density bonuses based on the percentage of affordable or workforce units that are in the structure.
Well, that's the inclusionary zone.
Correct.
Remember that those, those three ordinances that we have on the books go back in some cases fifteen years. If nothing else, they need to be looked at to see whether they're applicable today. I like the idea of bundling them all together and having one single ordinance that governs all different kinds of.
Well, I'm not sure if I do, huh? Because the inclusionary zoning allows you to have market rate with just a.
Well, so does, so does the projects under seventy-nine E. Certain number of them have to be affordable, but also the rest of them can be at market.
Right.
Well, inclusionary is a term that Wolfboro.
What I've asked now two or three times is, everybody comfortable with workforce and elderly only?
Only?
Yes.
No.
No, I think we, we need to broaden our picture, don't we?
I think that's what she was asking.
That's what I'm trying to find out. And, and if you want it broadened, how do you want to state it? I, I mean, it's an important issue.
Yeah, and, and that's something we should think, think about on a work session.
Okay, well, that's all I've asked people to do is take a look at this.
We will.
You know, take it, take it from here. But so everybody seems to agree with having a zoning district where it's not just for workforce and elderly, it's for market rate. Is that right?
Asking a question.
Tentatively, I would say, personally speaking, yes. I would like to hedge that by saying, I'd like to see what the planner comes up with first, have a chance to sit down and think about it before I commit myself finally.
I would think we need more information before we really continue the discussion.
Well, the reason I bring up the HUD definition is if you qualify for those financing options and things like that, they come up, they come up with the ratio. So a third of the project can be market rate. So if the only mechanism for somebody to take a lot at a certain size and make it affordable is to qualify for other funding, then that program comes with its own stipulations. So that's why Kathy and I were saying, well, do we want to use the HUD definition or do we want to use our own definition? How, which then leads to, well, do we want to include market rate housing?
Maybe that's a discussion, HUD definition versus our own definition, and work together to decide.
Correct. So the, the way to, to work through that is how, how many housing need groups can be provided for in a density change if such a density change were made? And how do we lay that out? And that's what I hope to bring to you.
Okay.
Sounds like a question.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so Tavis, you'll come back with us, to us?
Absolutely.
With something?
Something.
Okay, very good.
I have a comment on our discussion at the last meeting about Class Six roads. And we've made a recommendation, which wasn't unanimous, about not having development on Class Six roads. I think one bit of information, which I was not aware of at the time, was that basically across the street, there was another house on a Class Six road. And so therefore, the select board allowed this thing to occur. But I don't think it is an incursion into the master plan's statement that we don't want to have development on Class Six roads. I don't think it's a major issue and I don't think it really sets a precedent which says, oh, we're gonna allow somebody half a mile up a road to do something. And so therefore, I, although, I guess I would have liked it if they hadn't, I don't think that this really affects the intent of the master plan. And so therefore, I'm not really concerned.
No, and there were some other details that came out just past the property in question at that last meeting, whether to, whether the waiver was to be granted or not. Just past the parcel in question is the police department gun raid.
I think that was discussed the last time. And if they had access to it, if they were maintaining the road to get there, then that in fact says that the town is in some way maintaining that property. So I, I think it's, you know, it's not the type of incursion that I guess I would worry about or that the recommendation.
It wasn't a half-mile in, right?
That's right. And the recommendation by the master plan is, we're not really offending that. So I, I think it's okay.
I got the sense from the board that, you know, there was a structure there. It had been inhabited. In this case, literally, the, the waiver was required to get an electrical permit so there could be, simply be electricity in existing units.
I'd like, I'd like to make a comment. After going to my house and reflecting on that request, I think everybody needs to understand that the water reservoir is on the backside. And I think one of the things that we want to do is we want to have containment of a unbuildable area around the reservoir. And that piece of land that goes past that property that we talked about actually butted up to the back of the reservoir. And that brook that comes out actually is the outlet from the reservoir. So I think that was a pretty critical piece of information that wasn't really divulged. But, you know, seeing other properties built past that one would affect my thoughts on anywhere near the water reservoir. And, and that's where I stand on that one.
Well, one of the recommendations of the master plan is to have all the property around our reservoirs conserved and protected because that is a resource which is needed by the town. And that is a long-term project. If, I, I would make a wager, if the select board could do it with a magic wand, they would do it tomorrow. But it is a costly adventure and something that is a long-term project rather than done yesterday.
Okay, all right. Oh, okay, we're now down to public comments. The members of the public want to address us.
Hello, John Sandin, Six Wyon Oak Gate Lane in Wolfboro. Several times, it's been mentioned that this discussion of affordable housing was mentioned in the master plan. But there are also several other things mentioned in the master plan, like the character of the town, the rural character of the town, the parking, the traffic in town. All those factors seem to me to apply when you're thinking about density in the, in the business district particularly. Secondly, spoke about this density discussion affecting Bay Street and Wolfboro Falls. But I did not see that on the map. The map only goes as far as up to those properties. We're not talking about what's happening on Bay Street, what's happening in Wolfboro Falls. So I think you need to expand the map if you're thinking about thirty units per lot because there are a lot of bigger lots just outside of what's on that map. My second point is that many of you went to the charrette for planning about the district. I did not hear one person that lived along Lerner Street saying they wanted more housing. Said other things. They said they wanted sidewalks, they said they wanted other pieces of property to attract tourists. Did not one of them say they want more housing on Lerner Street. And then the other point I would like to make is that you're talking about putting very small units into the downtown district. And you're missing the point that there is short-term rentals. That's many of those places that you would put thirty, three, three hundred or four hundred square foot. They're like a motel room. So what are those gonna turn into? They're gonna turn into Airbnbs or short-term rentals? Those are the questions that I would ask. But what is that about?
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Anne Loggett, Rock Crossing and Pleasant Street. So I've been listening to this and I'm thinking, cart before the horse. Have I ever seen an analysis of the inventory of the population and the housing in town, including those that are now short-term rentals that could possibly be converted into long-term rentals? Why not give an incentive to people who currently own properties that are rentable instead of giving incentives to developers? With no data for right now and the prognostications I've heard, oh, the town's gonna grow, the town's gonna grow. Right now, we're coming out of COVID. People have moved here. I bet they're gonna start selling. I think things are gonna change. I think to react to the everybody's mantra of workforce housing puts you in a position of not being long-term and thoughtful planners. Do you want to be the ones that people look back at and say, oh, there was this big scare that there wasn't workforce housing, but we had plenty of houses, we just didn't allocate it the right way? Without numbers, what the hell are we doing? We have a lot of residential properties here. We have X population. How can, how can we, how can we as humans predict the future of what the real estate market's gonna be? We could end up putting a glut in Wolfboro and screwing up the whole housing market. I totally disagree with Mike Hodder looking at the whole town. I think that defeats the purpose of workforce housing and the ability to work, walk. I have nothing against workforce housing, absolutely nothing. But it's gotta be thoughtful. In the charrette, they talked about thoughtful workforce housing. They talked about ways to do it thoughtfully and attractively without sprawl. I, I, I don't know. I'm just, I'm just thinking, in, in the world I came from, you needed data points. How could you sell this to the town without saying, we can't just say we have a workforce housing problem, we don't have the numbers. Nobody's shown anybody anything. What, you know, if, if you say, we, we, we end up with a hundred and eighty, do we need a hundred and eighty or do we need five hundred? Anyway, so that's, that's my frustration. And I know that from fellow citizens, that the word density is going to set off a lot of alarms. So it's gotta be presented thoughtfully with a long-term plan, not a knee-jerk reaction. And short-term rentals is going to be a subject that's gonna get in the way because it's there, it's the elephant in the room. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to John's point, we, we had asked Tavis to look at the central business district, which is what, what this map is. And you're right, I mean, Wolfboro Falls and Bay Street need to be included if we're now talking about those. Okay, next item.
Coincidentally, for the board to keep in mind, the short-term rental could be curbed with the help of the seventy-nine E four B if it were in the appropriate zone.
It could be what?
Could be addressed. You could provide incentives like Anne was talking about for people to consider long-term over short-term.
Right. Okay, we've got two sets of minutes here. Yes? The first one, October nineteenth. Do you have any issues? If not, entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
Approve.
Has been made. I'll second it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, intentions?
Abstain.
And let's see, the, the November second, twenty twenty-one.
I have a couple of comments.
Okay.
Page three, the first Tavis Austin paragraph, second line, after reviewing the file, change I to he. And further down in the page, another Tavis Austin comment. Tavis Austin said, my understanding, change my to his. And in the Mike Hodder section at the bottom, after that first complete sentence, motion to accept the application is complete, fine. But then there is the missing text, motion to approve. Not in there. So that needs to be fixed. Motion to approve and then the vote. Someone go back to the tech, to the tape or whatever we had and include that. And then the other comment I had on page six. The one, two, third Tavis Austin comment said, yes, they are, he didn't know. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, let's see, I've got a couple corrections. The, on the first page, then at the bottom where it says, Kathy Barnard asked if there was a motion, and it was, we then opened the public here and closed the public hearing. And then, on page three, again, the public hearing was opened. Let's see, public hearing for the proposed zoning changes on seven. It opened the public hearing for the proposed sign ordinance, and then Brad stepped down and Julie it. So, page 13, down near the bottom, Peter Goodwin stated the natural resources, community, and the future land use needs to be added to the master plan. Is that right, Peter?
Mm-hmm.
I've got one, page three.
Aye.
John Thurston said, this is not a transportation, I think that it was, is this a transportation corridor?
Where are you, John?
Middle of the page, page three. I think the question was, is this, that, is, strike, strike, this is not, is this?
Marver, yeah.
As Tavis replies.
Right, okay. Okay.
I had just a couple. I just wanted to get rid of some of the HIC speak that got accredited to me. On page three, the bottom, Von Dugan paragraph, I think, it's a very logical place. And if a kid is on a bike and wants to go to town, so just add and. And then, on page five, I'm pretty sure Von Dugan didn't said there is some mechanicals. I'm pretty sure she would have said "are." And then, on the plan, and they're probably condensers, not, they look to be condensers.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
I think those are pretty safe changes.
Okay. Entertain a motion to approve the November 2nd.
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Tensions?
So just for the board's edification, we still, we still don't have a new recording secretary, recording assistant, for what the appropriate term is. So what's happening right now is Jake has formatted a flash drive. So everything you say is going directly onto a USB stick so that Terry and I can write
Okay. Thank you, Terry.
Okay, great. Okay, so entertain a motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you, folks.